Hi, everybody. Welcome to tonight's special call. City Council meeting, May 20, 2024. All calls.
Mayor Patrick Hale.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Deputy Staff. Tracy Hughes. Shirley from Plannery.
Here.
C.B. Abel.
Here.
Melody Kramer.
Here.
Dan Hall.
Here.
Tom Martin.
Yeah. Okay, we'll let Mr. Abel do the invocation and I will.
Mayor Abel, we gather here today seeking your wisdom and guidance as we deliberate and vote on important matters for our city. Thus all council members with clarity of mind and unity of purpose. May our decisions reflect fairness, justice, and will being of all of our citizens. We ask for peace and grace to fill this room. Amen.
Amen. Attention, pledge your peace, salute, pledge, giant pledge.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We will now consider approval or consent agenda, agenda, which are items one through thirteen. Are there any items that we need to move to regular agenda? And if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Hmm?
You have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All calls, please.
Tom Martin. Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Kramer.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley from Plannery.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Hale.
Yes. Motion passes. Okay, on to the regular agenda. Item number fourteen, please.
Receive presentation relating to proposed Meskogi capital improvement funding program for the city of Meskogi or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of council. We are, we've been in the process for a long time of working towards a general obligation bond. And so tonight is our opportunity to discuss that further. And then we have some of the items for possible action a little bit later on. So here is how we got to where we're at. For more than two years ago, I had our police and fire chiefs put together a capital program so they could analyze what our needs are, for them in particular, for public safety. And we've done a capital program for the city as well. What we're trying to do is figure out what our needs, our current and future needs would be and current and future funding. And so what we found from looking at that is that how we're funding our city through sales tax exclusively was not working and is not long and sustainable. We're going to open up the door because we are in a public meeting, certainly to make sure that we can. And so our, so we have this, this program. I will try and speak up since it's maybe a little bit loud. So we looked at and said, how are other cities meeting that need? How are other cities fulfilling their capital needs as they look to operate their city? And so what we found is a lot of other cities use what's called a general obligation bond. So the council looked at trying to do that at the retreat in 2023. They said, come back to us, you know, in the next month and tell us what that looks like. And so we did. We had another council meeting, a public meeting, where this was discussed in May of 2023, and the council gave direction to hold an election in the calendar year 2023 for a 25-year, $77 million bond. And so rationale at that time that the council members gave was this is, we've been fifty years plus since we had a bond. We have a lot of need that has been unaddressed for a long time. And they asked, how can we realistically reach that goal in trying to cover as much ground as we have lost as we possibly can? So that was the solution that they came up with. In July, they said, maybe we need to slow down a little bit. And so they did not want to rush into this program. And so the council said, let's continue to work on this program, but look at it for 2024, not 2023. And so since then, a lot of work has gone into developing projects, talking with community members. And in April, the council authorized a public opinion survey, which was then conducted. Again, April 30th, the council took the results of those surveys and results of a lot of different project opportunities and narrowed those down for the projects that you're going to see today. And so at that meeting, they said, we want to meet again. We want to have a special call meeting on May 20th to go over those projects and try and call an election before August 27th. And so that is why we're here today is because the council has given direction to try and address needs in a way that other communities do, but we do not, and trying to do that over a deliberate timeline over several years, multiple years, with multiple public meetings along the way. So general obligation bond is at valorem tax. We have our bond council in the analysis here. If we have specific questions related to the mechanism. And so what we've done, bonds are very specific about what they can and can't be used for. And so we have put those, followed those, put those ordinances together that you have tonight. And so we do again, looked at how other cities do it. So larger cities do it, smaller cities do it, cities our size do this. And this is how they pay for their capital projects. And since we haven't done it for 50 years, we're a little behind. Again, how did the council come up to these numbers? And people have asked me that before. The question back in 2023 was, when we identified the need and how long it had been since then, the council said, we need to, as a community, address that need as best we can. And so their answer was, their question that they asked us was, how much money can we get? And this was the answer. The answer was 25 years is the length of time, the longest length that you can do a bond for. I think the most recent school bond was 20. But when you raise a large amount of money, you take a longer amount of time. And the advice from our bond council was that 15 mils is about what other cities do. To not be a high tax community, we would be able to implement a 15 mil rate and be comparable to what other cities did. So the council said, that makes sense. That is fair and it's give our citizens the opportunity to act like other cities do. This is a little bit of a chart that shows that. On the right-hand side is the tax rate in Hilldale and Meskogi Public Schools. At the very top, those numbers are small to read. It's about 102 in Meskogi and about 105 in Hilldale. These other communities that have bonds are usually almost all at least 15 mils higher than we currently are. So what we see is when these other cities are funding their city and their capital needs through this tool that we are not currently using, they're going at about 15 mil levy. And if they, and if we did the same, we would be competitive with our tax rate. We would not be a high tax rate city. We would have a tax rate very similar to what those other cities have. And so this was another tool that the council used when coming up with this as a potential solution, is how are we different than other cities? Why are we struggling to do things other cities aren't? And this was the answer. Other cities are doing it, and this is the way. The answer said, we want to give our citizens the opportunity to do that as well. But if we do 15 mils, we will be not going, our citizens will be paying a millage similar to what other citizens pay in communities that use this tool to try and meet the needs of their community. So of course, what people want to know is how much is that going to cost? This is a new tax, and the council have been aware of this the whole time. They know that if we want to do better as a community, it's going to take more money than we currently have. And so we need to be able to put that in dollars and cents form. And so the dollars and cents is that it's about $12.50 a month for $100,000 of property valuation for those 15 mils. Again, the 15 mils is an average over that time period. And in a given year, it may be a little higher or lower. And Mr. Ellis can explain the legal and accounting finance versions of that. But that's, that's what it would work out to. The idea is that this will begin in the 2025 tax year. So as the council was considering this, they did go through a lot of public input, many committees of the city, and many committees of the city of Meskogi Foundation, Meskogi Needs More, a lot of community input. I've heard recently it wasn't enough community input, and it wasn't all the right people. And so I'm happy to admit to say, we could have done better on our community input side. I'm happy to say that we learned something every time we did it. So I know there's some criticism about how we got to where we're at. What I've talked about some is my daughter and my wife, they make cakes different way. It does taste good when we get done. And so what we've tried to do is have a lot of community input to this point, and hopefully get to a point where people say, these are some good things for a community. If we would have done it a different way to get here to this point, we would have done it a little bit a different way there. We all agree, we could do things differently. We've gotten to this point. And so we asked the community in these ways. And again, at the very bottom, you can see, we asked them, we said, this will cost you more. This is what the approximate cost will be for that $100,000 of property valuation. And so about 70% of the respondents were in support of the bond, including property owners, people who live in Meskogi. All of those things were an important part of our survey. People were asked, what kind of projects would you be most interested in paying more money for? These are the answers that you saw. There's a graph that kind of represents that. And one of the most interesting things was, the people that read the infographics, that had data about what you would get if you voted to increase taxes, more of them were in favor of the bond. And so the more people, the more people knew, the more likely they were to be in favor of raising the taxes. And so that gives us an opportunity to know that in the 92 days between today and the election, that we have a really great opportunity to meet with and talk with an infographic community about the projects that the council has decided are high priority and will make a difference in our community. So we have done a long process. I'm not going to go through all the details here, but over the year-plus that we've been doing this in public, we've done all these things, identifying costs, identifying projects, identifying what categories they need to go into. And so our opportunity over the next 92 days, which is, by the way, a very similar process and timeline, even generous compared to some of the bonds that we've seen offered through our public schools. The timeline between calling for the election and the timeline between the vote, 92 days is as high as any of those last three bonds for the city or for either of those school districts. So we're not being an outlier. We're not rushing anything. We have years to prepare, and we have a long voter education process. Having said, the council did meet on April 30th. They did give direction to come today and prepare items to call for election on the specific projects totaling $100 million. So it's about $77 million with the project costs and the general obligation bond, and discussion of a renewal or an extension of the half-cent sales tax that we've used in the past for CIP. We'll discuss those as we roll into items coming up. So today, again, following the plan that's been in place for a long time and that the council's put forward, we are bringing those forward today. We are going to have as a next step to engage the public. A lot of people say we need to know more. That is a big next step. Ask me Andy Badenac, who's here with us, to talk a little bit about what that looks like. She's working with us to help make sure that we have a robust community education program. So I'll let her talk to some of that and what's coming next.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, Mayor, Council. It's always good to be here with you. So I think the most important thing to understand about the potential go-forward process here is that the public education process is a critical piece of involving voters. I mean, the goal would be that everybody in Meskogi who is a registered voter or who could be a registered voter before the day of the election knows what's going on, understands the project list, has a chance to ask questions, has a chance to tour buildings, has a chance to see the videos and the needs documents and public statements from the department heads about why those projects are on the list, and then has a chance to make an informed decision on August 27th for whether or not those things are important to them at the cost that it would carry. So there are four propositions that would be coming out of this effort, should you choose to go forward, three that relate to the bond and one that relates to the sales tax. So part of the mission is going to be to make sure that the public understands exactly what is in each of those propositions, what's covered, what the ballot language dictates, how the money must be used, and what projects will be happening and when they would happen, so that people have an idea of if they vote yes, when does that thing then take place? That's an important part of the equation for most people. Public education meetings will be part of that. We anticipate holding those in June and July, so people have a chance to ask questions, get in depth with the information, and then come back to their leaders if they have further questions that don't get answered in those meetings. A website is part of this effort. So should the council choose to go forward, that website would be immediate. This week, people would have a place to go and look for the project list, the funding requirements, the dates and times, the ballot language. All of that information will be available immediately to people because it should be. And then that will let them have a chance to reference frequently asked questions, information as we go. You saw Mr. Miller's set of tax impact statements for other communities. That information will be on the website. I mean, the goal is for people to actually really be informed, not just kinda, because we want people to make an informed decision. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So we did, I did want Mayor to be here because it's, we do know that it's important. Some of the questions that we've had are like, when, what public meetings are we going to have? How are we going to make sure the public's informed? And so not only are we going to do that as a council and as staff, we have outside assistants as well to help make sure that we're doing that effectively. And so thank you for being here.
Because this is when we ask those questions, like, the $77 million, there'll be a $100 million payback, right?
No, there's two separate, so the $77 million relates to the three bond propositions. The other amount of $23 million is the CIP sales tax renewal. So two different funding mechanisms for one package.
I have another question. So what would be the payback on the $77 million?
That's a neat question.
Yes, that's fine. This is, if you'd like to ask that, and Mr. Ellis can address that.
I'll be way out of my lane for that one.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Nate Ellis, Public Finance Law Group. So when general obligation bonds are issued by a city, first thing that has to happen, you have to have an election. You have to get voter approval, authorization to go out and issue those bonds. Then those bonds are authorized to be issued in one or more series. And so, you know, if we looked at, what if we just went out and issued the whole thing as soon as we could? The soonest date that we can do that, there's a process, a statutory process that we have to follow, includes advertising, that the city is going to seek competitive bids, and then on the, on the day that's set out, the city actually gets bids in from financial institutions, individuals, anybody that wants, that has an interest in buying the bond issue, and whoever has the lowest interest rate on the bond, they win the bid. Then that process goes, you submit a transcript to the attorney general, they review it, there's a 30-day contestability period, and then once that's done, we can close. So if we have an election in August, the earliest date we would sell those bonds would probably be sometime in October, and we would be able to close around the end of November, early December. So that being said, based on where interest rates are today, if we issued the full $77 plus million worth of bonds today, the total interest cost, in addition to the principal, would be about, rounded off, about another $40 million, a little bit less than $40 million in total interest cost over 25 years.
What is the current rate?
As of current rates, it'd be around a 3.7% interest rate, which, I mean, that's, that's where the market is right now. Rates could be more than that, interest would be a little bit more than that, rates could be less than that, interest would be less than that. But we're bound to that competitive process when we sell the bonds to take the lowest bid so that we get the best rate based on the, on the market conditions. That amount of total interest, so 78 plus 40, so 128 million or so of total payback over 25 years.
78 and 40 is 118, I think.
What did I say? Did I say 128?
Yeah. Don't matter, don't matter, another ten.
Yes. 78 and 40 is 118, that's correct. And so that paid over. When you issue bonds, you're required by state law to have the same amount of principal due in every year. So that means you have principal plus a lot of interest at the beginning, and by the time you get to the last year, you have the same amount of principal payment plus just a little bit of interest because the balance is much lower. So your payments go down every single year, and that's why we talk about an average levy. The $77 million of projects came from looking at what is the current total valuation for the city of Meskogi and assuming really little or no growth, looking into the future. What would 15 mils on average support over a 25-year time horizon? And the answer was $77 million in projects. If, if the community continues to grow, or if it grows at a larger rate than the next to nothing that's been assumed, then that tax levy is going to drop faster versus slower. But it will drop on a year-over-year basis. So if we issued all of it day one, we might be as much as 18 mils at the start, and by the end of 25 years, we'd be down to like four or five mils. So again, we look at that average, and so that, that was the target that we were attempting. But again, it's, it's forward-looking, but that's, that's a reasonable level to support based on little or no growth. If there is a larger amount of growth, and I think there's an assumption that's made in some of the numbers that the financial advisors run, what if you grew closer to 3%? Well, if you look over 25 years, your average levy is probably going to be closer to 11 mils versus 15 mils in that scenario, because that growth is going to bring that levy down faster because it's going to generate more tax revenue. You have a larger base of taxes that are paid, and you don't have to levy as high a rate to generate the amount you need for that year's debt service.
So far as we look into Meskogi over the last 20 years, does anybody know if we've grown or went down in population, far as growth?
I'm going to defer on the population question.
I mean, we're talking growth, all positive. I'm just, I'm playing devil's advocate here, and I'm like, if we don't have that growth and we decline, say we lose, say Georgia Pacific decides to pack up and leave, which is, I hope they never do. Love paper company. But if one of those big manufacturers left our company or whatever, or they have another incident like happened a couple of years ago with the fire and stuff, and it closed and it, what, then what happens? Who picks that up? Who picks up the?
In any given year, so the levy is going to be based on what is necessary for debt service for that year divided across that tax base. If there's, you know, there's that question, there's also the, you know, what if a tornado hits and you lose part of the valuation? It is. And so the impact on that is the remaining valuation might, might bear a higher levy for a period of time until that's recovered. Again, however, you have seen reasonably sustained growth over the last 20 years in your valuation. It's fairly reasonable to project that absent some disaster, that continues, and even in face of a disaster, there typically is a rebound, and that catches back up after a couple of years. So, yes, that, that's correct. I mean, that it is, it is an unlimited tax, whatever is necessary to generate the amount to make the debt service payment that's due in that year, again, spread across the entire tax base of the city.
Got a couple of questions. Thank the Lord, I haven't heard anything about Georgia Pacific leaving anytime soon. But I have heard news of a billion-dollar industrial project. Things are looking real favorable. We've also got some other industrial projects that are looking very favorable. So on the industry run, I'm quite excited and hopeful. I'm assuming that same as if you lost to Georgia Pacific or anybody, but if you gain some of these other projects, it'll be helpful.
Sure.
And appropriate as helpful as one might be hurtful. Another question I have, and the manager might answer this, or you might answer it. My understanding is, we're not going to use $77 million day one.
Correct.
Some of our needs are staggered. You know, police might need a batch of new cars now, but they won't need any until another seven or eight years. So we're not going to spend all that money.
Right.
It appears to me that we've got quite the staggered things. I'm sure that that lowers things because we're not using all of that money at once, so your formula changes a bit.
I think, I think if we issue somewhere around 60 to 65 million right out of the gate, that would put us right at 15 mils to start off, and then it would start declining, and then you could layer in in future years.
Let's go and ask a question. Excuse me. So if that's the case, and these projects are staggered, would it be beneficial to us to stagger the bond? I saw Broken Arrow there, and I know that they are, their bond is staggered in five-year increments. So wouldn't it be better and cheaper? I don't know, I'm just asking. Wouldn't it be better and cheaper for us to also stagger like they're staggering since we already have the projects that, he said, seven to eight years out, they're only doing five. So if we say, for instance, maybe five projects, five years, five more projects, like they're doing in Broken Arrow?
What, I mean, one of, the biggest part of the answer, would it be cheaper or more, is a lot of that ties to what are the interest rates? We know rates, two things I know for sure, rates are going to go up and they're going to go down. I don't know in what order or when. But, so that, that has a big impact on that. It's, I mean, you know, five years ago, when we had rates on a 20-year bond and cities were getting them for 1 and 1/4%, obviously the levy impact was much, much lower. But the reason why we're going to stagger here, and the reason why Broken Arrow does that and other cities do that as a program, very similar to what's proposed here, we may not issue every single year, we might issue every other year for six or eight years to get all those proceeds out. But there's federal tax requirements, we have to, we have to guarantee that we're going to spend all of the money within three years. We already know for a fact, some of these needs, we're not planning on spending for seven or eight years, so we don't want to issue those bonds today. We couldn't comply with our tax covenants when we get the bonds as tax-exempt debt. So yes, it'll, I mean, the interest will drive, I would say more or less, it's going to cost about the same, except whatever the change in interest rate is over time.
I've got another question pertaining to that. You know, we haven't issued a bond since 1973. I did a little research in Broken Arrow, Big Speed, Jeans, Owassa, Tulsa. They've done bonds continuously for the last 50 years. We've done none, issued no bonds in the past 50 years. So I'm thinking that we got a little bit of catching up to do. I mean, you can't neglect things, equipment for firemen or police or utility needs or any of what we're asking for. You can't not do that for 50 years and then say, well, we'll do a bond every five years. We will fall apart, our infrastructure will fall apart if we, if we did it that way. You can't do it that way.
Before you catch up.
Once you get the city in shape, which it will be in shape, and maybe the payoff's in 20 years, then we'll be able to do bonds similar to the way Broken Arrow's done, similar to the way Owassa's done, similar to the way Caducea has done. We'll be in that position. We've, we've got, we're just way, way, way behind the eight ball, and I'm sorry, but that's where we're at.
You have to start somewhere.
Yes, sir.
Other questions for Mr. Ellis or Andy? Otherwise, we may, oh, yes, all right. So one of the big questions that the constituents and I have in work too, Lord help me, I've been on the phone all weekend with them since they found out we put this on. How does this bond issue differ or affect our school bonds?
So this does not in any way impact or impair whatever this school district decides to call. They have their own structure that they have to issue under, they have their own limitations from a constitutional, state law basis. So if a city does or does not issue geo-bonds, doesn't prevent the schools, there's no total millage levy that you can't, you know, you're not allowed to exceed. So the schools can continue to do whatever their needs dictate. So the schools can continue to do whatever their needs dictate and whatever their voters are willing to support. There are also, I mean, it's important to notice, or note also, they are different jurisdictions, so they have boundaries that extend outside the city limits, so only a portion of their constituency is within the city, and also only a portion of the city's constituency is within each of these school districts, because there's several school districts that override the city. So they're, they're different geograph, different groups of voters in aggregate. But again, the city's issuing a bond and putting that in place won't limit the city, or won't limit the school district's ability to call elections and for their voters to approve them if, if their voters deem it to be worthy projects.
So it's just up to the voters if they want to carry the tax on it?
Exactly. And the city's tax would only apply to the taxpayers that reside within the corporate boundaries of the city.
Thank you.
All right, I think this is probably the appropriate place to pause. Our PowerPoint's not acting how I want it to, but we will make it, we'll make it dance around a little bit. But I think if there's other conversation on the 14th, this would be an appropriate time. Otherwise, we'll get to the next items, and we'll talk about the individual projects within those agenda items.
And I, I think what we might do now, and what action needed on that item, we've got some speakers. And then we'll request the speakers before we get started. Okay. Item 15, please.
Consider approval of ordinance number 4234A, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Muskogee, Oklahoma, authorizing the calling and holding of a special election in the city of Muskogee, state of Oklahoma, on 27th day of August of 2024, for the purpose of submitting to the registered qualified electors of said city, the question of the issuance of general, general obligation laws of said city, an amount not to exceed the sum of $78,685,000 to be issued in series to provide funds for the purposes of, one, acquiring, constructing, expanding, renovating, repairing, and/or equipping public safety buildings, facilities, and equipment, all to be owned exclusively by the city; two, constructing, reconstructing, repairing, improving, and rehabilitating streets, roads, bridges, and intersections in the city, including lighting, sidewalks, and bike paths, landscaping, related drainage improvements, driveway reconstruction, utility relocation, and other related improvements; and three, constructing, expanding, repairing, which may also include improving, renovating, acquiring and equipping community facilities, all to be owned exclusively by the city, all to be completed with or without the use of other funds, and levying, and collecting an annual tax, in addition to all other taxes upon all the taxable property in said city, for the payment of the interest and principal on said bonds, providing for election procedures, authorizing professional services agreements pertaining to the issuance of said bonds, declaring an emergency, and containing other provisions related thereto, or take other necessary action.
Okay, now, would it be, we're starting to bother speakers. I'll list the speakers one by one, and if they would, I'll, I'll try to say their name and invite them down, but if they would, repeat their name, and they'll have five minutes. Mr. Ron Dean.
My name is Ron Dean, 5108 Denver Street, Muskogee, Oklahoma. Thank you, Council, for giving me an opportunity to address your concern in this. About a week and a half ago, I started getting quite a bit of, of questions sent to me on email, telephone, folks coming to see me in person, text, concerning the effect that a geo-bond would have on their property taxes. I'm the county assessor, so anything that's ad valorem related in property tax will come to our office. We will be the ones that will, will explain, but also the ones that will handle most of the questions and, and concerns that folks have on that. So I started visiting with people individually, as well as several groups that, that asked me to come and kind of explain to them. What I, I learned was, was several things. Number one, folks are more aware than I, I thought they were of the needs of Muskogee. And folks, folks are aware that we have a lot of things that have not been addressed for many years, and a lot of things that need to be done, things, some that I had not even heard of. And also, I, I became aware that folks want to be involved in the process of deciding how you prioritize those needs. And folks also want to be very involved in the process of trying to research and figure out the best way to go about solving those needs without bankrupting individuals, businesses, or our community, or our kids' and grandkids' futures. So several of the concerns, I started making notes of what those concerns were, but also with those, those concerns came a lot of suggestions from folks. And what I'm asking the council to do tonight is to take no action on calling for an election, because from what I heard over and over and over from folks, and became aware of myself, is that there needs to be a lot more interaction with the public and our industries on the front side, rather than trying to sell them something after it's already been sent to a vote of the people. So here are the concerns. Number one, that stood out was the length of the bond, 25 years, rather than something more alongside a, a five-year performance-based bond. If we do what we said we were going to do in the timeline with the monies we said we were going to do it, then we come back five years later, and we work on the next set of priorities. And perhaps those priorities may have changed during that amount of time. We don't know what, what needs are going to come about in the next five years, that we don't even realize now that we have. One of the big things also was the failure to, to reach out to our industry. If we look at our, our top 25 industries in this town that employ our, our people and our workers, they had not been consulted to help put this together with their concerns, with their ideas. We're talking about some very intelligent, capable, experienced people that might have some ideas that none of us have ever thought of. If there's one thing I've learned over the 21 years that I've been a public servant, is that we don't have to know it all if we're willing to listen to the folks that do know it all. So I, I think that that was one thing that I learned, that I thought, man, we, we should be talking with these folks and listening to them. Not enough time to inform the public. The public doesn't need to know after the fact what we're asking them to go vote on. They need input as we're forming those list of priorities, and not 500 folks on an eight-day survey. The unstable economy, we don't know a year from now what our economy is going to be locally, any more than five years or 10 years down the road. That, that unknown over 25 years. I keep hearing us compared to Jinx, Broken Arrow, Glenpool, Owasso. Something needs to, to be said publicly here in this forum, and that is the fact that our household median income in Muskogee County last year was 58,000. That's fifth from the bottom out of 77 counties. All of the surrounding counties, Sequoia, Moby, McIntosh, Hassel, have all increased in household median income. Wagner County's 86,000, you're 93,000 in Tulsa County. We're 58,000 here. We need to do something that is, is going to, to help our people, but not bankrupt our people. The effect on current industry, the effect on attracting new industry, the effect on our, our lenders, because landlords will probably pass that increase in property taxes along to them, who are some of the most struggling people, the effect on seniors.
Mr. Dean?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Now, other speaker, Vernon Antononi. And all you need to do is just your name only, no, no address.
Don't need address. Thank you. My name is Vernon Antononi. Been a proud resident of Muskogee and Muskogee County for 45 years. And what I'm asking tonight is very similar to Mr. Dean, that we kind of hold off on this a minute, because I look around, and Mr. Abel, Mr. Martin, Melody, and Dan Hall, brand-new council members, probably one or two meetings is all you've attended, correct?
Correct.
I'm not sure you, the four, even have enough knowledge at this point in time to pass this on. Not only is it going to affect our long-term financial situation, but we don't know what the, what the verdict's going to be in November. And if that bond does directly affect our school districts, you know, ad valorem's ad valorem. So if a school district, for instance, my district of Hildale, that will have to be added on top of the bond issues that they're going to have here. So our residents will, will get a double whammy if, if we are, if we decide to pass a bond issue for new buses or construction. I'm just asking to hold off, I know it's been 50 years, eight or nine months more is not going to be a tragedy. We have been able to purchase some fire trucks, we do have some police cars, and yes, there is a priority. And I would venture to say, almost everyone sitting out here does realize that we need what you're asking for. But I don't believe we need to issue, to do this over a 25-year period of time. That interest rate, I'm not sure that 40,000 on that note is a fair amount, because I'm not sure we know that figure. I was told it could be several thousands of dollars more than the 40,000 of interest, putting us closer to 150 or 170 million dollars rather than the 120. So I'm just asking you, please reconsider the rush to judgment for the overall effect that it's going to have on, on our city and our residents. There's no doubt that most of these people sitting behind me have voted for one or both of you in their wards. They are your constituents. They are asking you to please slow down, and at least let's be educated to the full degree, rather than put it out there for a vote and then say, okay, we've got 90 days to teach, to educate them. We're coming on summertime. What does that mean? Baseball, softball, vacations, half of the community's going to be gone at any one time or another. And I think you're pushing us to vote on a time when most of the people will be, that it will be the last thing they're thinking about during our summer months. So I'm asking especially the four of you new members of the council, please at least allow a few more months on the other end to, let's get this right. We're going to do something, and I'm all for it. Let's just do it right. I don't think we need to rush to judgment, and I don't think that we need to push for a vote in the, in the next 90 days. We, we need to do this, we need to do it right. If it fails, then what's the next option? And I don't think at this rate, we better come with a second plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mark Hughes.
He's not here tonight.
Okay, Mr. Hughes is not available. Mr. Caraway? Just, just your name, no address.
My name is William C. Caraway Jr., known as Pete, and that's after my dad. Where it came from, I have no idea, but both of us are Pete. Some of it may or may not be on topic, but most of what's said already is what I agree with. My priorities, one is under the control of this council. My other priority is in a different area. My two priorities for the city is infrastructure and our schools, in particular, education of the kids, period. What does that mean? I always promised that we had a good chance of having a nursery in our bond issue for repairing the schools. That didn't materialize. Why do we want a nursery? Where we can recruit teachers that have degrees in the subject in which they're teaching. And most of our kids are going into classes where the teacher doesn't have a degree in the subject that they're teaching. They have an educational degree. How to teach, not what to teach. And there's a big difference. And I have some problems with Mike's philosophy. One, how many times have you asked Mr. Stewart to go do a survey to see what fees you could lower? You always say, ah, go find out which ones are higher than ours. But the real question is not being answered. Why is it high, or why is it low? We're not Tulsa, we're not Porter, we're not Dakota, damn it, we're Muskogee. What they do is their business, what we need is ours. You can only mimic success, you can't copy it. That goes with leadership, that goes with everything. You're either a leader, or you're not. You have to know what you're doing. And more importantly, you need to know what you don't know. In other words, go ask the guy that knows. Common sense is a, is not an end-all, it is the end of a process of experience and education. You ask me to how to, how to cut a piece of wood? I don't know, I always cut on the wrong side of the line, either come up short on the board or long on the board. I'm not a carpenter. What would be common sense, based on my experience, is not going to build you a common sense house. And that applies to you people up here on the daisies. Problems are not solved on common sense. They're based on analysis, experience, and the economy, a lot of things outside of your control. To answer one question, this surprised the hell out of me. I didn't get to Oklahoma until sometime in the 1980s. I'm from Georgia. I was sitting over there saying, oh, God, you brought up Georgia. But, and question two, your edu, your level of population. The population of Muskogee in 1940, 80 years ago, was 70,000 people. That's less than a decade. That's when the baby boomers came. That's me. I'm 80 years old. Going pretty close to 81. But half of our population left somewhere after World War II. Why did Hildale go out here in the county and come up with an independent school system? 1950s, 1960s?
Mr. Caraway? Thank you very much for your comments.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Greg Webb.
Greg Webb here. Pleasure to be here tonight. Time is money, time is risk. The longer you put something out there, the more chance you have something going wrong. My main objection, and I, I echo many of the, we've heard here tonight, specifically from the mayor, from the city manager. the mayor, from the city manager, is we want to do a 25-year obligation of money, but we don't have a 25-year plan. We don't know exactly what's going to happen. Muskogee doesn't exist as an island in itself, we're part of a nation that's been at war the last two years, but more than likely, we'll see our own troops involved in that war before the end of the year. Been putting on a trillion dollars' worth of debt every 90 days, that's going to have impact. You know, I look at what Broken Arrow's done with their downtown, Hawk City. You want to see a city that took an old, dilapidated city hall and made it a gleaming jewel in the city, go see Hawk City. Collinsville has done the same. They had plans. Now, you all mentioned, Mr. Millie, you mentioned you've been working on plans the last four years, and that's great, but we don't know what those plans are. The survey, there were 347 homeowners that took part in that survey. Did the company that did the survey, did they provide you the demographic data, what neighborhoods, where did these 347 homeowners come? What is their socioeconomic status? I think it was the Half Company that did that, and I think we paid them somewhere in the neighborhood of six figures to do that survey, and they only, is that incorrect?
That's incorrect.
What were they paid?
It's your time, I want to interrupt. Go ahead, sir.
Okay. Well, I'd like to know. I'd like to know, that should be publicly available knowledge. And if they only got 600 respondents on a contract worth $100,000 or more, you give me that kind of money, I'll go knock on 15,000 doors and we'll get a larger respondent. So what I'm saying is...
I do feel like it'd be appropriate for me to address that, because it's very far afield from accurate, and I do...
If you'd like an answer, we'll have a mentor give you one.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I think you're seeing, you have citizenry that want to get engaged...
Can we pause the time, please? Thank you.
So I'll just address that specifically, Greg, if you don't mind.
Okay.
We have a company, Mr. King is working within the planning department, doing a comprehensive plan, which is something you have for 10 years. And that is a huge project that is going on, that has nothing to do at all with this general obligation bond, and they did not do that survey. Mandy, who spoke earlier, is with Crossroads Communications, and that is who is doing the survey, and she's not being paid in the six figures.
Okay.
I think she's very happy to be...
Otherwise, this is missing somewhere.
No, so, anyway, I just wanted to clear that up. You are referring to two different things, and you are correct, that the company that's doing the comprehensive plan is called Half. And so, we don't need to talk about comprehensive plan, because that's not on the agenda item, it's not appropriate, but I did want to clear up people thinking that we paid $100,000 for a survey. That is not the case.
Well, I assumed that a go-bond obligation would be hand and glove with a comprehensive plan. Are you stating that wasn't the case?
Comprehensive plan is a term of art that is related to a document that's created and is available on our website now, and is currently being updated for the future. And so, that's not what we can talk about on this agenda item, we'll be happy to talk about it later.
Okay.
Please, Dan, forgive me for interrupting.
Not a problem, not a problem. I appreciate wanting to clarify things, because that's all we want. We want to learn and know better the state of where we're at right now. As I talk to citizens around here, they're not aware of the water sewage plant that's having to be new and built, or the bond issue that goes along with that. There's a lot of things they're not aware of. They're not aware of the lawsuits facing the city or the county.
I'm sorry, I nearly interrupted this point, sir. You need to make sure that you stick with the agenda that we're talking about and not go off into other areas.
Okay. If we get hung with a big amount, that's going to affect the finances of this city. That will affect the go-bond. So, all I'm saying is, and the other thing, why, Broken Arrow's taken three years to come up with a plan. They're going to vote on it next year, because they want to get as many stakeholders to vote as they can. We've chosen a month, August, as one of the lowest turnouts for elections. If you have confidence in your plan and what you want to do, push it off to November or next year, and let's get out there and let's really sell the plan. That's what I'm saying. We want to do this. I want Muskogee, you know, I look, Muskogee in 1973 was probably one of the top 10 cities in the state. For the last 50 years, we've been a little bit of a slide. Bixby, Owasso, Jinks, they were where Muskogee was in 1973. So our county, or our council and our mayor's don't have a good track record. Now, we've got a new county, new council, new mayor, we have an epic opportunity to turn this around, but we're not going to turn it around with one bond issue. We're going to have to, we need to have a plan. And I think with Broken Arrow, we can talk to other towns and see what they've done, and maybe learn from them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Next speaker will be Mr. Ivory Van, if you would just state your name, and that's all we need.
Ivory Van, I was a city councilman for eight and a half years, and what y'all doing now, I apologize, because I know what it is to go to council retreats. I know what it is to be a new councilman. I know what it is to learn, every day you learn something new. And I would be sitting in that seat right now, if I had to went home on my own, I'd be right there with Mr. Curran for this, hearing the same thing that she's hearing, everybody up here's hearing. So I think this bond issue, you have a good plan, because when you're in that council retreat, you had to spend your time, and being a councilman is free. You're not getting paid a dime. And when you spend your time, and we come up here and you got people saying, well, we don't think it's right right now, this and this ain't the right time. When is the right time? Muskogee's been behind the egg ball a long time. And like I say, I'm not trying to get upset, because I mean, I come here, used to come here a lot of times, just mad. But I'm not mad, I'm happy today. It's good to be here, to speak on what I think is right. I'm a taxpayer. I have property, I have a home, I pay taxes on every single year, and I'm proud to do it. I read your article, I read Mr. Kathy's article in the paper Sunday, it was a good article. And at 1250, I'd pay that 1250 any day to get those projects here in Muskogee that we need, desperately. You got people riding around here in Muskogee that don't have homes, it's not going to affect their career, they have an apartment, but you, like you said, department owners don't get to put it on them like that. But if you're going to vote on something, live in a home, if you're going to vote on something, have tags that represent the state of Oklahoma, not another state, riding around for years and years. You moved to Muskogee, you supposed to have, Oklahoma, you supposed to have Oklahoma tag. So when you got Oklahoma tag, you need to, I mean, when you got a tag a lot of states, you need to have Oklahoma state tag. And that's, I'm just saying that, because there's a lot of people running around Muskogee like that. They're not giving back to our town. So when I pay my property taxes, I'm happy to pay them, because I want something good for our city. And I applaud all of y'all, because like I say, I know how it feels to be up there in these shoes. And I had to make a lot of tough decisions, and I got a lot of criticism. And I can say one thing about, I made a difference on some things in this city, and I hope y'all make a difference tonight, invoke the right thing, because this gentleman here, I think he does a great job representing the city. So that's my two cents, and that's my, you know, I just, I think the bond needs to go through and move Muskogee forward on these projects that we got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Van, and thank you for your contribution to this meeting. Next person to speak is Mr. Mason Cale. Would you like to state your name, also?
My name is Mason Cale. Looking around this meeting today, I can't help but notice that I'm probably buying away the youngest person here. I'm a new resident as an adult here in the city, I was born here in the city, moved away for several years to go to college. And before I moved, when I was a senior in high school, I had many friends, mentors, teachers ask me, do you plan on going back when you're done, returning home? And why would I do that, was my answer. I could see what the city was, and it was a dump. And when I told my friends and mentors and colleagues just one year ago that I planned on moving back to Muskogee, "Why would you do that?", was their question for me. Because they could see from far and away that the reputation of this town was bad, and that this town is a dump. Now, I moved here because I believed that this town can be what it was. In 1980, the population of Muskogee was at its highest, according to the U.S. Census, 40,000 people. At the same time, Fort Smith had 36,000 people. Today, Muskogee has 36,000 people, and Fort Smith has 89. They have passed a continuing bond issue ever since then, and we have not. A city's like a garden, you've got to invest your time, you've got to invest your resources, and you've got to invest your effort if you want it to grow nice, and you want it to grow beautiful. And we've not done that. We've continued to wait, delay, put things off, for 50 years, it seems, 50 years, and look what that has gotten us. Just one strut down Muskogee, and you can see dilapidated buildings, abandoned lots, and burnout businesses. And nothing's done of it. No one's moving here to buy those properties and turn them around. Oklahoma is actually poised in a fantastic position. There are so many states in our country where the cost of living has gone so far through the roof, that they're looking to migrate to places like Oklahoma, places like Arkansas, and places like Kansas. And we've got an opportunity here to develop our city and make it one of those places you want to move. Now, I know a lot of people are concerned with the state of our school districts, that's very important. I, as a prospective family starter, a resident of our city, I want to have my kids go here. I want to have them go to our school districts. But no one else is going to want to, when they see it from the outside. It doesn't matter how many bond issues you pass for the school districts, if your city is a dump, no one wants to live here. There's always Owasso, there's always Bixby, there's always Jinks, there's always Broken Arrow, there's always Talawak, there's always Salasaw, all places that aren't a dump, but have good schools. They'll move there. They're moving from places like California, and New York, and Illinois, and the cost of living, no matter where you are in Oklahoma, is so much lower than there, that they've got pick of the litter, they can choose wherever they want to go. And they're not going to choose Muskogee if we continue to let it be a dump. They're just not. There's so many other options in our state. Now, I want to address something that some of those who are opposed to this bond issue have said, that we need to wait, and it seems as though that's been the refrain for 50 years, we need to wait. Hey, hold on, we need to hold off. 10 years, hold off. 20 years, let's hold off. 30 years, let's hold off. 40 years, 50 years. If we hold off another 10, it'll be 60. If we hold off a 10 after that, which I think if those people have their way, we might just do, it'd be 70. I don't mean to be derogatory to anybody, I respect those in my community, I love those in my community, that's the only thing you can do when it's your community. But it seems to me that people like myself, who see their future here, are being put up, are having roadblocks put up in front of them by those who have had their paths here, and chose to delay. I urge you to really think this through. This is an opportunity of a lifetime for our city. Our state has that opportunity. We have people that want to move here, and this is our opportunity to turn our city around and make it one of those places people want to move. I shudder to think at what our city might become if we continue to let it slide down, to manage its decline, which is, quite frankly, what's happened. We've managed its decline. We've allowed it to get a little worse, get a little worse. We have a bump in population there, hey, we're turning things around, but then we, inaction takes over, and it gets a little worse. And now we're in the state that we are now. We have the opportunity to seize what Oklahoma is giving us.
Thank you, Mr. Cale.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Mayor. This is, our agenda item is specifically to deal with the general obligation bond and the propositions therein, and all those things that can direct you to a certain person. Thank you very much. And so, we do want to talk about those propositions. We've talked a lot about how we got here, about what the process has been, what the process maybe should have been, maybe what we could have done, and this is our opportunity tonight, because this is what's on the agenda to decide if this is what we will do. And I would hope that the people that have spoken understand that if they would have gotten to a different place, if they would have got to this place in a different way, if they do want to move the city forward, they can have opportunities to do so, even if they did disagree on how we got here. So, we want to look at those propositions. There are three in the general obligation bond. The first one we're going to look at is community facilities. Again, each of these will be considered separately as a ballot issue, so you can vote for, as Ms. Babernak said earlier, there's four opportunities to vote. If you vote for community facilities passes at the election, should one be called, there would be 17.4 million set aside, and it would be divided among these projects. Some improvements at the civic center, the heat and air system there is original to the building, the same boilers that Merle Haggard had when he played are the same boilers we have now, so we know we've got a lot of deferred maintenance. Improvements at Hat Box Sports, including adding some turf fields. New upgrade to the Martin Luther King Jr. Community Center, and some contingency. We'll talk a little bit about the community center, Martin Luther King Center, we basically doubled the size, added a purpose room, and as we go through our voter education, we'll be able to talk in more detail. So that is the community facilities bond proposition. There's another bond proposition for street and bridge projects. So here are the primary projects, and again, there'll be a lot of information over the next 90 days about what these things are specifically. Downtown improvements, some people mentioned today, they'd like to see us do those things, this is part of the bond proposal, the street and bridge project element. We have had a lot of community input from our friends downtown, Main Street Muskogee, some committees that are involved with that to help what that looks like. Smith Ferry Road in front of Hildale High School, we've got a grant, but it's not going to cover the full cost of the reconstruction, to allow us to speed that along and make that a three-lane road with good, solid stormwater detention. We're going to need some extra money, and this is included in the bond. Hospital district improvements, this is the area around St. Francis where there's construction. If you drive along Gendre in particular, that road needs a major upgrade, and we're having a major upgrade to our healthcare facilities, and it's appropriate that we improve the streets around that area. North Country Club in Shawnee, Phase Two. Phase One was recently finished with the new signalization as part of a past CIP. Phase Two is to widen that intersection, so that it's not as catty corner, and the turn lanes line up and match up with the new signals, and those turn lanes extend further back. Pedestrian gateway bridge over US Highway 69, this would be a partnership with ODOT as they expand Highway 69, this would be a partnership that would allow us to have a kind of gateway bridge where the pedestrian bridge is currently on Highway 69, just north of the border. So this is just a small visualization of kind of an engineer drawing of having some much wider lanes, turn lanes dedicated out on the Smith Ferry Road, again, the stretch between, like, and the highway in front of the high school. The third proposition has the most money, and it is over $47 million, dedicated to public safety. And we'll talk a little bit about why we need some new facilities, but we've got a new police department. Our current police department is housed inside of this building, which is a civic center built in 1930. There's a lot of problems that go with that. It's not conducive to actually protecting our community and having affected long-term security. Fire station on York, and then the balance for public safety vehicles and equipment, because we know that those are large capital costs that we're not able to meet. I mean, this is part of our over-two-year-long project of planning out how do we meet these capital needs. And what we looked at, and once again, this is how other cities do it, they do with a general obligation bond. And so, I do want to ask our fire chief, Joey Moore, to come forward and talk a little bit more about the overall... And so, I do want to ask our fire chief, Jody Moore, come forward, talk a little bit more about the overall needs of our public safety in the fire department, the people that protect us, as well as specifically the fire station on York Street. Chief Moore.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So, about two years ago, two-plus years ago, the manager approached me and kind of, you know, requested a plan of what we needed for the next several years, twenty-five years, in regards to capital needs. Obviously, most of you have seen the fire station on York Street. It's not very appealing to the eyes, nor is it appealing to the guys and girls who are housed in it. Has some issues. Structural integrity obviously needs more than a paint job. And then there's a big hazard of the engine pulling out on New York Street. The station sits so close to the street that the guys have to open the door, pull out on the apron with the chance of the door coming down, or pulling out into traffic with lights and sirens. Obviously, that poses a hazard, just responding to calls on a daily basis. So, as you can see, we've got some renderings of our proposal of our new fire station. It will sit on the same property, but obviously set back quite a ways to give that safety aspect of pulling out onto the New York Street itself. So, that's much improved, as well as a facility. Obviously, anything new is going to be much better than a sixty-year-old station that has issues dealing with measure. So, along with that project, we talked about equipment. So, fire trucks are not cheap. The last fire truck we bought was almost six hundred thousand dollars. The one previous to that was a nineteen model, and it was right around five hundred thousand. So, in just a few years, the price has increased over a hundred thousand dollars. So, that seems to be the trend. What makes that even more difficult is when we order a new fire truck, if we ordered one today, it would take at least two years before we got it. So, obviously, fire apparatus is very important to us, you know, protecting citizens of Muskogee, protecting industrial assets, Georgia specific, all the larger ones, Rockaway Glass, all the larger facilities that we protect. Obviously, if we don't have the right equipment or equipment that actually works, that's going to be very detrimental. And they, like somebody said earlier, employ a lot of people in this city, and it'd be detrimental to lose those jobs. So, very important to us, again, keeping guys safe, keeping the citizens safe. Because most of you can drive around town and see a lot of burned-out houses. So, in the past year, just this year, in three hundred and sixty-five days alone, we've had over a hundred and ten structure fires, and that's just structure fires. That doesn't account for all the other fires that we actually respond to. And for a city our size, that's a very large amount of structures. If you can imagine, if you can just think about a hundred and ten structures in this town, that's how many we've had in the past three hundred and sixty-five days. So, a lot of our equipment is getting a lot of wear and tear, obviously. Making that many structure fires over time. Those trucks idle, and our pump at a high RPM, so obviously, over time, it's going to wear the trucks out. And some of these trucks in our fleet, seventy-three percent is almost aged out, so meaning that it's very difficult to find parts and repair those. So, and again, thinking back to the two-year wait period if we ordered one today. So, already puts us way behind, okay? So, moving on down to extrication equipment. Typically, it is eighteen to fourteen-year of useful lifespan. This is the equipment we use to bring in people from vehicle accidents, industrial accidents, all different kinds of accidents that could take place in the city. So, that being said, we have received a grant last year for one new set, but we need at least two more sets. So, again, those sets we currently have, they're not the new set. They're about, I think they're ten years old at this time, so they're due for a replacement as well. Radio equipment, we did get a grant for radio equipment a few years ago, but as it stands so far, most of the communication equipment has about a ten-year lifespan. The fire department, the police department, before we got these new radios, were getting, Muskogee Communications was actually getting parts off eBay to service radios, which is obviously a big component when we respond to medical call, or emergency calls. So, very, very important in regards to everybody's safety, as well as the public as well. So... So, along the lines, we also provide mutual aid to departments outside our city limits. So, obviously, they depend a lot on us as well. There's some specialty equipment that they do not have that we actually have and are able to offer assistance in regards to that. So, OGNI, for example, if there was an incident at the power plant, we are mutually aid for Fort Gibson. So, we will provide that aid to them. Obviously, that's a critical infrastructure component to our area. So, very, very important as well. All that being said, you know, we do have a lot of needs, and they're not cheap needs. It's needs that, you know, hopefully, future will, obviously, you know, create that opportunity to give us new equipment. We'll see. But again, all these items on this, or all the propositions are very important to the future of Muskogee. You guys have any questions, or can I answer any questions for you?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Just so people understand how much a radio costs, because I do. Would you like to share that with them on what a radio costs for just one handheld?
If it's one handheld, you're looking at four to six thousand dollars for one handheld.
And we have to have, that's how we talk to the nine-one-one centers.
Not cheap at all.
And one more old question.
Yes, sir.
Maybe they should know how many times a car has hit the telephone pole or the side of that fire station over the last few years?
Several, yes.
With our firemen sleeping right inside there. Something's got to be done there, it's got to be moved back, it's got to be rebuilt. So, we do have a certain need there.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Moore. And again, this goes to, I want to have you come forward and help describe how the council can achieve this decision. Because they see those needs, and they say, how can we meet these needs? How do other cities meet them? And they find out the answer is that there's this tool called the GEO bond that we are not taking advantage of. So, that's again, when we talk about how we got here to this point. Also want to bring forward Chief T. to talk a little bit about public safety from the viewpoint of our police officers. He's been with us for a long time and very helpful. I'll make sure that you all hear from him.
You all know me well enough to know that I don't typically read statements, but when I found out that there was even a consideration of this bond not going to vote, I worked Saturday, came again Sunday, and worked some more kind of fine-tuning this. So, I'm going to actually read this, and we'll be happy to answer any questions after the fact. First of all, thank you to the manager and the council for the opportunity to speak for a few minutes on a very important decision, not just for the future of our police and fire departments, but the future of our entire city. Martin Luther King Jr. once said, "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter." I promise you that the ability of our city to have the opportunity to vote on this bond is something that matters to me, that matters to our department, and because of that, I won't be silent, and I hope that you all won't either. I believe in my heart that every citizen in our city should be guaranteed their vote matters and that their vote counts. The city council holds the ability to allow that to happen, each of us, and I think you as well, knowing your hearts, that that matters. Your vote tonight is not saying that the bond passes or fails. It merely gives our citizens the opportunity to decide for themselves. This morning, I had the most supervisors I've ever had at a staff meeting. You say, well, why would that be? Because of the excitement for the potential that this bond opportunity holds for our officers and our department. Talk about instant morale boost. That's something that would bring instant morale boost to our department. The opportunity to work in a station to be proud of, a station that allows temperature regulation. I sent an email to the city manager over the winter because it was forty degrees in our halls. We have space heaters literally in every office in our police department, and they run nonstop. You say, well, how does that happen? Well, because it's always cold. In the winter, it's cold, you need the heater. In the summer, when we turn the coolers on, you can't regulate it, so it's cold. I've been in my office before, and it'll be fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty degrees when I come in, so there's constantly space heaters running. A station that's adequate space for officers to do their jobs, a station where they don't have to worry about pipes breaking. Many offices have been flooded with different types of fluids. You can all imagine where I'm going with there. So, you just never know. Adequate space to store our evidence. We're storing in an old jail and running out of room there. The list goes on and on. Have you seen the renderings of the police department? That's what I sent out to, that's, I think, what generated all the interest in my officers in my staff meeting this morning, because they seen that as like, it's, that's amazing. That's amazing for the potential, and sitting right on Oakmoggy Street for the whole world to see when they come through Muskogee. Also, an opportunity to have vehicles, equipments that allow them to do their duties to the best of their ability, and a renewed sense of pride in doing that. Not have to scramble and beg for computers, radios. You're currently talking about radios. Now, just to be clear, Jody and I haven't got new radios, we didn't. For whatever reason, there's a lot more money out there for fire departments than there is law enforcement. So, they have nice new radios, we don't. And they're beyond the life expectancy of them. So, what that means is that our life expectancy ran out about three years ago. So, unless eBay has something available to us as far as parts, we can't. We just have to throw those away. So, that's what the life expectancy part of that means. Body cams, tasers, we constantly have to beg and borrow and ask the foundation and applying for grants to try to get the money that we need for, one, as far as the body cams go, one is our police officers, would we vote if they didn't have them? And I promise you, the community would as well. Vital, vital thing for our law enforcement all across this country, should have that available to them today. And the other thing is, I really believe that it helps us to be, it would help us to be able to recruit new officers and to retain the ones that we have. We're losing those guys, and I've talked to you before about that, as we're going to more money, better equipment, or both. My focus is obviously on the police department, but the list of other projects, as I see those, and I've been listening, are all exciting as well. Upgrades, remodel, public works, city hall, Martin Luther King Center, civic center, fire department, the port, Smith Ferry Road, library downtown, Hat Box softball, baseball fields, that's just to name a few. You have a chance to see a lot of those. That's what this bond has the potential to do. But you notice that I said, "Vote on." Now, I would hope and I would pray that our citizens would support our first responders, those same first responders who put their lives on the line, literally over time, that nine-one-one line rings. I, or we, just want them to have the opportunity to vote. The opportunity to vote is what makes this country the greatest in the world. That gives us the ability, our society has the ability to say yes or no. I don't think it should be our council that says yes or no. It should be up to our citizens of Muskogee to say yes or no on whether we do something or we don't. I partially described a little bit about our police department, and it's been years of struggle with regards to equipment. We've applied for hundreds of thousands of dollars of grants from the likes of Department of Justice, State of Oklahoma, USPCA, Cherokee Nation, the City of Muskogee Foundation, and many that I don't even know the names of. Just trying to make ends meet, and yet we're constantly, kind of like what the whole adage about the bond issue was being fifty years, we're constantly falling behind. All of that is now critical, not only for our equipment and our buildings, but also for our retention and recruitment of new officers. Dan, you know exactly what I'm talking about. Across the river, and I just found out just the other day, just across the river, they're paying more money. So, you have somebody, you lose somebody across the river, has better equipment. So, maybe it's both, they have better equipment and better money. That's what we face. Dan knows what I'm talking about, CB knows what I'm talking about, because he's lived it, his family has lived it for decades. So, constant struggle for all those things, yet we do what we can every day. We go to work, they go to work, to keep our kids safe and our citizens safe. Cities all around the state, especially in East Oklahoma, have elections for bond packages to help with big-ticket projects that they're unable to fund with general fund-based dollars. Projects that could not and would not be available to their employees or citizens just on tax base alone. Police and fire department buildings and equipment all over are made possible by general obligation bonds. Muskogee recently passed a one-hundred-and-ten-million-dollar school bond. Why? Because the citizens of Muskogee saw the need. You know, when it first came out, it's like, boy, that's a bunch of money, that's a lot. But the school representatives went out and they sold the community on that bond. I don't think, I don't know exactly how that process worked, if it was what was, I know they had meetings, we've had meetings. They come up with what they wanted, they had pictures, they had brochures. That's all the things I think that we're going to do as a city, the exact same thing, and passed overwhelmingly, because they knew that it was something that was needed. And that's what our job is. That's what my job is. You all give us the ability to put this in front of the people for a vote, and it's my job and my officers to make sure that the city has what they need on whether they want to support the bond or not. If they say yes, great. If they say no, then we'll back up, punt, and we'll try again. You know, each of my officers took an oath when we started in law enforcement. We took an oath to do the best of our ability at the job that we love every day. Part of our oath entailed in that is we would give our life, if need be, for the safety of our citizens or another officer. And we fully accept that. Every day, we accept that, and we go to work with what we have. The citizens of Muskogee, they put you in those seats, and I know that you took an oath as well. You took an oath to do the work of the city, to do the best to your ability, and to do what you feel is best for the city. I humbly suggest to you tonight that those duties are to vote yes and allow our citizens the opportunity to vote on this bond issue. Allow the citizens of Muskogee the opportunity to say yes or no to an opportunity that has the real potential to take our city into the future. So, let's take that line from the late Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter." Counsel, this is no time to be silent, because these things matter to your first responders, and I believe they matter to the people of Muskogee. Be happy to answer any questions.
Chief, a new officer's hired, and they get a, you know, equipment issue. Is that all new stuff every time?
Equipment, no. No radios or...
I know when I got hired twenty-two years ago when I started, I think the truck I got had a hundred and fifty thousand miles on it.
And that's what they would be getting. We've got one new officer out of this last hiring process that'll get a car that'll have in excess of a hundred thousand miles on it.
I guess it would make it worth it. They still get a used car, but it'd be a lot newer, a lot safer.
Absolutely.
And in the twenty-two years I was there, I loved being a police officer. I loved working here. I've never loved that police department. I mean, when you bring other officers here from other departments, they're like, what is this place? I mean, it's not that they hate it, but it's just there's no facilities in there to have training. There's, you know, we've makeshift, take the old jail apart and made it into a conference room type of training area. There's no area for training, there's no area for really visitation from other departments, besides just your office, whatever you had there, so... And I agree with you wholeheartedly that our job here is to put this out for the people to vote, not for us to say you can't vote on this. So, that's where I'm at with that. Thank you.
And Johnny, I don't think everybody in here, they know the police department sits right there. They just don't understand that if they go through that wall right there, if you could walk through that wall, there's an arena sitting there with the floor like at the civic center, and the police department was built in the middle of the arena. In there, there's a stage, there's curtains, there's sound system from nineteen forties in there, and our police... in there, and our police department is built in the floor of that with blocks and is put together.
Yeah, the fire chief talked about his cinder block building on York Street. Ours is a however many fifty-year-old cinder block building within the old arena, which is why obviously everything's running above us. So old lines, old sewer lines, water lines have busted many times and ruined offices. Anything else? Thank you all.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief. Chief Moore, Chief DeGee, I'd like to thank you guys both for your service. You do a tremendous job. Your men do it, and women do a tremendous job, and thank you very much for your service to this community ocean.
So that really sums up the propositions. And so we're on this agenda, I would consider that. I would say, just as one thing in conclusion, as far as my presentation goes, all the things that you've heard are things that Muskogee could have, and we don't have it because we can't, we have them because we haven't done it yet. And so that's our opportunity is to do the things that other cities do in the same way that they do them, which is this general obligation bond process. I don't know, Deputy Mayor, Mayor, if you have any comments or the next thing you'd be to have any further discussion or?
I have a comment. Can I speak before?
Please.
So I would like to say, this is a very tough position to be in. I came in here to say no, not to the everything that we were about to do, but because of the process and how this was handled as a new council person. I would say this. They're right about us not taking this matter into our own hands. I would say this as a council person, I will ask this, I will ask this as a council person. They came up here with a pure heart, and I would ask us to keep that same thought in mind as we move forward because some of these processes have not been pure. They have not been transparent. It was very difficult for me to take this step today, to come into this room, and I would say to us as a council that when we are behind the scenes and we're doing these things, to keep in mind the heart that they just spoke from. And it would make our job a lot easier. Transparency is a virtue. Integrity is a virtue that I hold dear. And I'm going to ask us to keep that in mind as we move forward with all of the proposed flyers, mailers, videos, and all of those things that you keep in mind that we are saying that we're doing this to really have the voice of the people. If we're going to have the voice of the people, let's have the voice of the people. If we're not, just don't say that to this police chief and this fire chief, that their voices are really going to matter if going forward, their voices are really not going to matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I want to echo a little bit of that because I was probably on the fence walking in here tonight. I'm not even going to lie to you. Because I have my pet projects that I love, and there's no, and from the beginning, I told you, police and fire, I would vote for this bond issue a hundred times over. Martin Luther King Center, I go over there and they're crowded over there and they need the extra classrooms, they need everything they can get. I'm not trying to pitch the Martin Luther King Center, but it's a good idea. The thing is, is that the way we've handled this, the way the survey went, the conversations that we've had with the people that came in to talk to us, not super happy about it. It was, I don't like things being shoved down my throat. I don't like, I get information, but it's probably not the information, and it's probably my fault that I didn't ask for it right. But there's no way I can tell you, say what I'm going to say tonight because there's a lot of these projects that we have to have. It's not a need when it comes to our fire and our police. It's not, it's not a want, it's not something that we just dream, let's go, oh, it'd be pretty to have that. It's not. It's a have-to. And it will look nice, and it's safety and security for our officers and our firemen is always going to be a top priority for me. Taking care, when then when we go look at this bond issue, we look at the children, that is the next generation coming up, and what are we going to provide for them? So I don't take it lightly when we look at this. I don't just come in here and say yes. If you want to ask Mr. Miller how many times I text him and email him over the weekends, he probably wished that I wasn't back up here. But I want to tell you, at the end of the day, I'm going to be that city councilman that asks those questions. I'm going to bring it up here and I'm going to have those conversations. You will never hear a meeting up here where I sit here and go, hmm, yeah, I wish I should have said something. Yes, let's vote yes on this. That's never going to be me. And I'm not condemning anybody else up here. If all they do is say yes and no on things, that's them, that's what they're, they got to live with their constituents. But I represent Ward Two and the city of Muskogee with what I think is the best decisions. And I'm just going to let you know that, like I said, fire and police have always been there. I've never had a vote for that at all. Martin Luther King, helping our next generation of kids, they have so many kids over there. I just challenge each one of you to go over there, check that program out, day in and day out. There are some things I'm not happy with on this bond issue, but I still, it's not my place, I'm only one vote up here and I'm only one vote out there. How you vote is your business, but just understand, I probably had over sixty-eight phone calls in the last forty-eight hours. Just as many people that were for, probably closer, were against. And it's not our place to sit up here and go, we shouldn't throw this out there for y'all to vote on. Even just as much as questions you have, while we're doing it, I have those same questions. The same doubts that you're having, I'm having. But at the end of the day, our community should have the right to vote on this, not just me. Love that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, do you have anything to add?
Mostly nothing. So I've been up here for many seasons. I've been here for, going on, this is my thirteenth year. And I apologize to the new council if it may appear that we pass this on to you guys. It's one thing that we can look at today with this council that's sitting at the table, there's great talent sitting at this table. We're going to have to pass a debt for the future days in order to get what we need here in our community. But let's not continue to pass the problem. Let's not continue to pass the problem along. We have heard from our police department about the great things that they need, can't afford them if we depend on sales tax. We've heard about the fire department's needs. I can tell you how many soccer moms and softball moms that have come up here and talked about the great things that's happening in Fort Gibson and those fields there, and Muskogee doesn't have it. We complain about how terrible our fields are. It's an old field that needs some work done out there at Hat Box. This is our only opportunity. This is our only opportunity is through this avenue. So I said, you know, about the years that I've been on the council, we've had problems, but we haven't been able to fix them. And so tonight, we come not to say yes, not to say no, that's not our job, but I think it's more than fair to give it into the hands of the citizens, to let them decide if they can afford this project or not, if they want to put the investment into this community to help take Muskogee to a next level. It was so inspiring to hear a young man talk about coming back to Muskogee and some of the things that we don't have, and it's a pit, and he would love to be able to tell his friends what's going on in Muskogee. I think if all these pieces are moving, when people come and consider bringing businesses to Muskogee, they'll see all these moving pieces, Muskogee would be a place that people would want to move back to, businesses would want to come invest in. So tonight, I want us to rest easy, our councilors. This vote is not to say yes or no. You know, when we leave here, what's that, we get on, we have ninety-two days to inform our citizens on what the cost is going to be. And it's left up to us, but tonight, our decision is to decide, you know, is it going to go into the hands of the people. So with that being said, I hope it's in order. I would like to make a motion that this agenda item move forward for consideration.
I'd love you to make that motion. Could I say a few words?
Sure.
You know, I kind of tickled myself. Muskogee, we're no Broken Arrow, we're no Jinx, we're no Bixby, we're no Owassa. Well, guess what? Nineteen seventy-three, even nineteen eighty, Owassa, we're no Muskogee. Jinx, we're no Muskogee. Bixby, we're no Muskogee. Broken Arrow, we're no Muskogee. Per capita income was higher in Muskogee than any of those places. Now, what? Flip-flopped. What's the difference? What's the, why? Why's the reason? Well, I'll tell you why. Bond issues. All of those cities continuously had bond issues from seventy-three till today. You can't die on the vine, you can't invest in your city. Some of you folks will know, I was getting out of high school or before high school, and I remember driving, of course, the back way to baby Tulsa, and you drive through Broken Arrow, and they had, well, I guess, Kenosha, Seventy-first Street, whatever they called it back then, mostly Seventy-first Street. And it was two-lane asphalt all the way past the cow fields and the empty lots, all the way to Woodland Hills Mall. And, well, before that, they kind of did some development up there, but darn near all the way, certainly all the way to sixty-nine, one sixty-nine. And when you hit Woodland Hills Mall and Memorial, Memorial and Seventy-first, if you wanted to head towards Bixby, two-lane road, cow pastures, both sides, all the way down. Now, look at Broken Arrow now in Kenosha. They've got five lanes heading on east, I guess. I don't need to tell you guys, it's phenomenal. Look at what Owassa has done since the nineteen eighties. Phenomenal. And it's all been because of a little bit of investment into their communities. You can't beat, Muskogee and Fort Smith were on par to an extent. What's the difference? Fort Smith had bond issues. Now, they're double, maybe triple the size of Muskogee. They've got Van Buren, and look at their infrastructure. So if you ask me, and we've had some good leadership in the past, but I'm going to tell you right now, this right here, this right here is good leadership. These are people wanting to change our community forever, forever. We don't want the same old lackluster community that is about to crumble within itself. They're making a statement that by God, if I'm going to do this job, I'm going to do the best I can, and I'm going to try for the best I can because I want Muskogee to be the best that it can be. We want our youth coming back. We want our youth coming back. I want my kids to take care of me instead of putting me in an old home by myself while they're living in Texas to put me in a back room out by the pool, take care of me. We all want our kids to come back, we all want our grandkids to come back. So thank you. Thank you for listening. I might remind one last thing. Bond issue rules for schools, bond issue rules for cities are different. You can't share a lot of information. We have rules to abide by, and we can't make quote-unquote promises that we can't keep. So we can't promise citizens before we vote to do one, an issue. We can't promise, oh, here's what we're going to have, or the school's going to have a gigantic stadium, it's going to have this or that. We can't do that. Schools can do that. We can't do that. So we've got rules to abide by. Now, even the voting percentages are different. They're just completely two different animals. So when we say we would have liked to have been able to, or we wish you would have done this earlier, we couldn't answer questions, we couldn't tell you what we were going to do, we couldn't tell you what we weren't going to do. So please remember that school bond issues and municipal bond issues are different animals, and there's different rules all the way around. Having said that, thank you, everybody, for your input. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Thank you, everybody, for your support. And Mr. Mayor, what's your pleasure?
So once again, I would like to make the motion that we move forward with considering the approval for calling for the election for August twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four.
I got one question before we do that. Why is the Martin Luther King Center in the category that it's in?
So it's a good question, and so I may work with our bond council leader, Ellis. As Mayor Cale said, there are certain things that can be grouped together and certain things that can't. And so I have, and certain rules that you have to follow with the G O bond. And so Mr. Ellis does that all the time, and so we defer to him on what categorist things we need to go into. So.
So if you're familiar with the concept of logrolling, when you have a proposition that's voting on a subject, it needs to be generally a related subject. And so as we looked through the, I mean, part of what I needed from council was, here's the universe of projects that we want to consider, and then I'm able to group them into, you know, hopefully as few as possible as propositions. And so three was really the number that we were able to group those into, a public safety proposition, and you'll note, those all have to be exclusively owned by the city, that's an requirement. Streets, those don't have to be owned exclusively by the city because streets aren't owned by the city, they're usually owned by the property owners. So, but all the streets projects are listed in one, and then we have a community facilities, which are projects that relate to buildings, they're not public safety, so not like the fire station building, not the police department headquarters, but other community facilities. And so that included the King Center and then some of the other projects that are listed under that proposition, kind of fall under those more general municipal community facilities, whether they're, you know, park-related or, you know, venues for, you know, sports.
I noticed that the HBAC for the civic center was in there with the Martin Luther King, then we have the baseball fields and stuff. And I'm not saying one way or the other, but I'd hate to see something not pass because it's grouped in the wrong area. Just a second.
I mean, that is a grouping that would be typical of, you know, non-public safety-type community facilities.
Councilor Hall, I think that when you talk to folks with young children, and here we are talking about children again, and what you said earlier about the Martin Luther King Center, people need to go out there three-thirty in the afternoon. I don't care who you are, you need to go out there, three-thirty in the afternoon, and see what they're doing to help raise a future generation of some good kids. They're all taught and tutored and treated with love and discipline. It's just a wonderful experience. And we need for our kids ballparks that are comparable to some of these other cities. Hat Box used to be the creme de la creme of every field around here. We need to get back there. I think the citizens are going to, that's going to be high on their list of importance is things for their children and things for their children's future.
This is a question.
Good question.
We need a second.
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please. Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Kramer.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flattery.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derrick Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Motion passes.
Thank you.
A little bit of cleanup work. We need to... We need to declare an emergency for this meeting. So, I'll entertain a motion to declare an emergency for this, for this meeting. Go ahead, a motion. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martinville. Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Kramer.
Yes.
C B Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hughes. Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Motion passes. Okay, item sixteen, please.
Consider approval of ordinance number forty-two thirty-five A and ordinance of the city of Muskogee, Oklahoma, relating to the imposition of a city excise tax of one-half of one percent in addition to any and all other excise taxes known or heard. To be levied on the gross proceeds or gross receipts derived from all sales taxable under the Oklahoma Sales Tax Code, providing for the use of the proceeds of said excise tax, providing for the effective date of said excise tax to begin on October first, twenty twenty-five, and terminate on September thirtieth, two thousand thirty-one, providing for subsisting state permits, providing for payment of tax, providing that the taxes in addition to taxes currently levied, incorporating certain provisions of prior city ordinances, providing for amendments to this ordinance, providing that provisions of this ordinance are cumulative, and in addition to any and all taxing provisions of other city ordinances, providing for severability of provisions and containing other provisions related thereto, or taking other necessary action.
Uh, first, we have a speaker and that would be Mr. Ivory Van. Mr. Van, please come forward and state your name.
Ivory Van. On behalf of myself and the citizens of Muskogee, mayor and council, this, uh, city clerk, assistant city clerk, Ms. Bohammer, I think y'all done a wonderful and great job today on, on this vote that we just, y'all just took. And thank you. That makes my heart feel good. It makes that seat that I used to sit in feel good. Thank you, Ms. Kramer.
You're welcome.
Right. This here is a sales tax, you know, it's going up a penny, correct? And that's another thing I don't mind paying, is a, is a penny on sales tax.
To, just to tell you, it's being renewed.
Oh, it's being renewed.
It's not going up at all.
Okay. Well, I'm glad, I'm glad you renewed it, you know, because like I said, here in Muskogee, when I had my bid, uh, council courts, I used to always have on the back of them, shop local, vote local. And I'll say this, I didn't say it while I was up there earlier, but we need to get our citizens more involved here in this city. Voting is important. People died for us to vote. And that's the, the lack of people not voting is why all this back here, this should have been flown through today on an issue this important, on the last issue and this issue here. But you can't get them out. I'm a precinct worker at the King Center. That's my job. Now, I got a job. And I get paid. I didn't get paid up here, but I get paid now. And I enjoy meeting the people. And being a precinct worker is, is a very glorious position. But like I said, I just, I'm so glad. And also, on this burgess and, uh, co factories coming here, I used to say when I was up there on the council, boy, deputy mayor, we finally gonna get casket ready.
Am I trying to get, yes.
I'm just saying.
I'm just trying to get things on the church.
I know, that's right. We do that too. But that's, that's another good thing. And that, right there on, uh, South Main Street, on that dollar store, I see it's getting a lot of business. So, you can tell us if y'all are doing a magnificent job. And I, I definitely appreciate it from the bottom of my heart. And keep up the good work. And I, I promise, I hope I don't have to come back up here again. But sometimes you gotta do what you got to do. It was just in my spirit to come tonight and, you know, voice my opinion. I'm not a speaker and I never have been. But one thing I can't do, I can try to get my point across. So, I appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Van. Mr. Miller?
Yes, so, um, as has been discussed, we, we were looking to, we, uh, when we're putting our projects together, we realized that, that we have a sales tax, uh, that is a half-cent sales tax that was passed in twenty nineteen and it is expiring in twenty twenty-five. And so, uh, the city councils directed staff to prepare, uh, us to renew that sales tax at the same time so we can talk about these projects together. And so, what we have is about twenty-three million dollars of projected revenue generated by that half-cent. Um, so, it really shows that us working together, just a little half-cent continuing, this is not a tax increase, can make a huge difference in Muskogee over time. That new tax would go into effect in October one of twenty twenty-five and be for six years. It would keep the tax rate on sales tax exactly the same as it is today. It would be used for capital improvements. And you all may remember, one of the main elements of the past C I P sales tax was twelve million dollars for street maintenance or, uh, and it's gonna end up being, uh, and so that is, and we had a foundation grant match, uh, before. We're doing, planning to continue that. We've had success with that, um, C I P street program. Um, we've talked about, uh, moving the police department out of this building. Uh, we want to rehabilitate City Hall, um, as far as roof, making the building watertight, the same for our Public Works Building, um, improvements at the library and, um, working with the, the Port Muskogee for, uh, protecting that area from, uh, from, uh, storm water, especially related to the twenty nineteen flood. We all remember that. There's, there's some projects out there that we can assist with on that. So, that being said, these are, uh, the things that have been discussed by council for inclusion in this, uh, renewal of the sales tax. We do have a vote here and on the next item, both to keep this sales tax in place to do these sorts of things.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. I will entertain a motion.
One more, second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martinville.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Kramer.
Yes.
C B Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. Uh, item number seventeen, please.
Consider approval of resolution number twenty-nine ninety-four, a resolution authorizing the calling and holding of a special election in the city of Muskogee, state of Oklahoma, on the twenty-seventh day of August, twenty twenty-four, for the purpose of submitting to the registered qualified electors of said city a question of approval or rejection of ordinance number forty-two thirty-five A of the city relating to a one-half of one percent excise tax in addition to all present city, county, and state excise taxes. With the proceeds of said tax to be used to fund capital expenditures, including but not limited to the streets, utilities, public safety, and community facilities of the city, or debt service in connection with said capital expenditures, as more specifically set out in ordinance number forty-two thirty-five A of said city, and containing other provisions related thereto, or taking other necessary action.
So, we need a resolution in ordinance to do this, that, and so we'll repeat what we said, but that, this will last and forward with the election.
Okay, you all have a motion and a motion.
Second.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martinville.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Kramer.
Yes.
C B Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number eighteen.
Consider approval of amended city council policy three dash six dash seven, collective bargaining or taking other necessary action.
Ms. Maggie Eaton?
I apologize. That was on my consent agenda. Um, mayor members of council, and again, we were just, um... I actually, do you have that again?
I do.
I apologize. I thought that was on my consent agenda. Okay, again, this was, uh, just to allow staff to streamline negotiation processes. Um, we removed a further, as negotiations continue, any subsequent offers or counter offers shall be approved by council prior to submission to the respective collective bargaining unit. Council will provide initial direction and allow staff to negotiate within those parameters. So, again, this is not taking any approval away from you all. It's just allowing us to negotiate quicker.
Thank you. Is there any action needed on this?
Mr. Mayor, can I comment on this item?
Yes, sir.
So, uh, it, it arrived here, uh, on this agenda because I did vote no against this item. And I probably should have explained why this, um, policy three-six-seven was put in place. Uh, Ivory Van was at the table as well as Mayor Marlon Coleman. And I know it may appear that it streamlines the process, but in our hearts, we wanted to make sure that it was always delivered from, directly from the council and that the council had a direct contact in delivering whatever those offers were in the collective bargaining process. And so, uh, I will be voting no again, but I just wanted to explain that, uh, it was put in here for, for, for good purposes. For good purposes is the reason that we put it in here. Again, we just wanted to make sure that, uh, our offers were al- always the offer that was, uh, delivered to the union groups.
Thank you for that clarification, Deputy Mayor.
Uh, and I remember a little bit about this when we were doing negotiations a long time, four years ago when I was on air. And it seemed like things weren't getting brought back to the city council in a timely manner. That the, uh, people that were doing the negotiations were delaying stuff or they were, they were adding, bringing things out. Now, Mr. Miller, I want to say this out front. This isn't anything next to you. Uh, this was, yeah. This was, uh, all the way, uh, when I first got on city council, the communication was not there. And we started a process like this to make sure that the city council knew what was going on. I noticed that one of the reasons why they said we want to do this is because we only meet once a month. And it may slow up the process. My remedy to that is we need to meet more than once a month if that's the case. And I'm not opposed to that at all. But I'm not in favor of this, guys. I, I want to know. And I think it's our right as a city council to be able to know not anything to, towards you and not to slow the process down, but I think that we need to be in that loop. Uh, because not only, what happens if five, six years later, you go, guys, bye, and we gotta redo this? Our city council will have to reprocess this. So, that's what I'm at.
So, this was brought for at the request of Doctor who's, and he's not here.
Be a perfect time not to pass.
Yeah, no, that's fine. The recording, yeah, and the recording is still in there. We still have to meet monthly with you and still have to tell you what's going on. But obviously, to make that clear about why it's before you today.
So, let me, let me ask this question. I just want to, I want clarity. Again, being the new person or one of the new people. So, let's say if we're negotiating, I just want to ask if this is what this is saying? So, if we come back and we say we want to negotiate something at three percent and you go and say two percent, how are we gonna know that you didn't do what we said we wanted done? Or if we say three percent and you go in and say, they said no, unless we did five percent, so I said five percent. So, is that what this is saying? That we, we don't have, we are giving that right to you? That you can just do and then come back and report, right?
The council will always, everyone, we can't, we can't ever do a collective bargaining agreement without council approval. So, that can't happen. We'll always be council group.
But I know that. I'm asking about the numbers. I'm not asking about you actually going through and doing it without our consent, but the numbers. If we say one number, you say another number, do we get to come back with that number? And then you go back and negotiate that number or is this saying that you just can't do that?
Well, here's how it's all, you know, we were trying to avoid that, you know, come back, come back, come back. So, we've got, I do, I've got, uh, confidence in our team. And we talked to our team beforehand and we tell them what we've got in mind. So, they know what we've got in mind and, and they know what we expect. Now, they're gonna take that information and maybe some information right there in the boxing ring with them. But they're gonna have our best wishes, but we've got to empower them to be able to make decisions. Now, if they make some one-off crazy decision, I think they know that they're not gonna please anybody up on this board. And they're the ones that have to vote yes or no on it. So, it was just to, you know, it, it, they don't need to be treated like children. They know what we want. And they're very capable of negotiating. And I think that we need to give them the flexibility and let them do the job that they do. And trust them, knowing that you have to approve it. Am I right?
So, the, the parameters to answer this question.
Right.
The parameters always set by council. And so, we have to stay within those parameters. And so, um, what, what that, uh, the, the reason that Doctor used to hold me, that he, but, and I don't want to speak too much for him. And if you'd like to wait until he's here to consider further for him to explain, that may be a wise course. But, um, was, we would have instances where the union would make a proposal to say, we want to do this on some, uh, on uniforms. We want to do this on, because we're negotiating, uh, a thirty-page contract. And he'd say, oh, we have to talk to council about that. We gotta go back to the union, right? And so, that, but he was getting feedback from the union groups that that was taking to him and that that's why he brought it forward. Um, it was not about, I mean, I, what you said was flattering and, and we do feel like we know we have to stay in your parameters and you have to approve it and we're not gonna go way off the, the feel on these things. The reason that he told me he brought it forward was because it was, we were having very small changes, but we're taking a long time to get to it. It just, it was a policy delay. So, that is.
You know, I really, really respect the doctor. And maybe we might put this off so that he's here and so that we can quiz him before the next meeting. But maybe we all need to talk to him to fully understand what his rationale and logic is. Because I guarantee you, his rationale and his logic is spot-on. He's a sharp fellow.
Can I, can I say this? And I, I, I see Tracy McGee back there as well. And so, I don't want to shed too negative light on the team that negotiates. But if it's not broke, you know, why fix it? You know, we have a process and a, a policy in place. And, uh, I, I, you know, I don't even want to go down this road. We may say that the, the level is five percent. And our negotiators will go in and say two percent, we're at three percent. Three percent is our highest percent. And that's accepted. And our hearts were five percent. We said five percent. And so, you know, we put that in place to make sure that every time these conversations were held, they came back to the council. Because once again, we want our employees to know that they are honored and appreciated. And, you know, if we're in the budget, that we can, uh, fix these problems. If it's not broke, why are we trying to fix it? I, I don't believe that the, uh, the, uh, well, I mean, we're waiting on the doctor, but I don't believe that that's true, that, uh, the union groups said that it was, uh, standing at, you know, timing in between the two. We put this in, in place to make sure that the council, uh, numbers were delivered directly to the union groups.
And so, forgive me if I, that's why they might be good or ways, a case underspoke that it's been brought forward because it was requested by us.
I, I just wanted the clarity. I'm ready to vote. I didn't.
Well, and I understand, I'm not trying to be negative because this is a whole new, I mean, just the whole group is different. The city council's different. The, the staff is different. But understand, about twelve years ago, when we were fighting for this, it was, I'm just gonna be blunt and honest like I always am. We actually told someone five percent, and that's why the last one, councilman Reed said that, because it happened. We said five percent and we said, why did you only offer three percent? And I probably shouldn't have said this, but he goes, my job is not to give them what you tell me to give them. Here's, here we go. This is what's in place.
Okay, here's.
So, and I know this is a whole new group of people, but at the same time, these things were put in place for safety nets for us too. And so... And so...
Well, I think Deputy Mayor has a very compelling argument or a very compelling point. So I think we should put this up for a vote, and do we have a motion?
I have one question before we do that, that's okay. Going on what Mr. Reed said, if they go out for, if we say, okay, the top is 5%, and you come back or some make them back and they say, okay, we're at 3%, at that point, we don't have to accept that, is that correct? We can...
Right, and so I don't, yeah, so we're definitely all at least talking about the rules we have.
Right, yeah, just numbers.
Especially about how we will negotiate this year.
Right.
And it is not the way that we are, that we have been, yeah, that we've been talked about, so...
Can I say, can I be real? Is one reason why this is coming up is because we only meet once a month, probably two, maybe? I mean, I don't know, not as often?
So I may have said too much, it's being brought up because Doctor Who's asked us to. And so I should not have even said as much as I did, because this has not been brought forward by staff as our recommendation to do, and it's about forged the request of Doctor Who.
So we have no motion, we have no pass? I make a motion that we deny this item, okay?
I said it, Dad.
All right. So yes, though, just, no, roll call, please.
What, does a yes vote mean you're against it not passing?
The yes vote means...
We're happy with what we got now.
Got it, got it.
Yes, but we have policies that...
Okay, roll call.
Tom Martinville.
No.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
No.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Patrick Kell, Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes. Motion passes. Okay, item number 19, please.
Consider approval of Resolution Number 2988 for the Community Development Block Grant, Small Cities, Contract Number 18265, CBVGSC21, for water line repairs in the amount of $288,333, or take other necessary action.
Mr. King.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we saw this item last week, just a reminder of what it is. This is a resolution that does two things, it adopts a Section 3 plan, which is a commitment by the city to serve low-income persons and businesses in consideration of the water line project. It will also designate Mayor Kell as the Equal Opportunity Officer in his capacity as the Chief elected official. We staff recommends approval and won't take any questions.
Do we have any questions? Oh, you're taking a motion? Okay, we have a motion and a second, roll call.
Tom Martinville.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes. Take a motion, item passes. Number 20, please, and go ahead, Mr. Miller.
Consider approval of Resolution Number 2989, approving the City of Muskogee budget for fiscal year 2024-2025, establishing budget amendment authority or take other necessary action.
Okay, I just was pointed out that we have a speaker on this item, Mr. Mike Gregg. Thank you, and just state your name on it.
Mike Gregg. We've heard a lot about transparency and leadership in the other items we talked about. My point here is probably asking a point of clarity, probably from the city manager, Mike. And I don't know, other than what we read, of course, it's obviously Resolution 2989, Section 2. And if my information is correct, the manager has the authority to, he himself has the authority of the council to use up to $499,000 for any type of project or whatever. And he can basically move that money around within the organization in most committees?
No, my spending authority is $49,000, it's under $50,000.
Fifty, well, then the information that I have been given is incorrect. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Miller.
Yes, mayor members of council, we are on the cusp of fiscal year 2025. And we've had our budget review last week, we had some questions, I'm going to try to get through those really quickly. You all have been patient, we've covered a lot of important areas for you today. So we have been working on this budget for three solid months. The council spent a lot of time on it, including at the council retreat. We've got you our budget book that you've had in hand now. We did have a public hearing on May 13th, there were questions, and it was tabled to a special call meeting, which is today. Today, we do have the opportunity to adopt the FY 2025 budget. Again, we are presenting a balanced budget. There are, and I'm going to highlight just a few of the things that are different based off of questions and information since we met last time. And so on page five of your books, you'll notice one difference, about $100,000 change. Through all of our discussions relating to tourism, we looked through the hotel motel and revised our projections. And so it looks like we're going to have about $100,000 more at the end of the fiscal year than we had originally projected, because those original projections are about three or four months old. And so we've upped that amount, and there's corresponding increases later in the budget as well. We've talked about our revenue expense assumptions, that our sales tax in Muskogee is down about 1%. Likewise, most places in the state are very close to flat, except Shawnee. Shawnee's economy is not booming, they just raised their sales tax rate, that's why theirs is up 15%. So knowing that sales tax is down about 1% for the year, we cut 2.25 out of operating budgets or non-personnel budgets in general fund to reduce the impact on services. Knowing that more than two-thirds of our general fund is employee compensation, we're trying to cut a very fine line this year. We did eliminate two long vacant positions, we did not create any new positions this year. Knowing that it's a tough year for the general fund, anything that we added would be something else that we'd have to subtract. We're able to accomplish our strategic initiatives through dedicated funds, and we'll talk more about those later. One of the questions I got this week is, how come some of the, a lot of these budgets are going up when we make cuts? And so the short answer is, you can look at our general fund, and that is, we increased it by about $400,000 as far as our projected revenues. So to, that includes all of the increases that we will talk about a little bit later. To get those increases and balance the budget, we had to cut that operating expense, so that's the reason why. Here's a couple of those major expenses, we've talked about them, and we had to cover those additional expenses to balance the budget. We did deal with the, our strategic initiatives through those dedicated tax funds, including major improvements on the streets and highway infrastructure, including over $10 million for street projects next year. Major initiatives with various sewer plant, water line, and sewer line replacement. Public image improvements in education for the public. We continued our highest level funding that we've had for economic development. And we've got, one of the changes that you'll see is that we do have incentives for housing, but it's slightly less based off the recommendations that the council made last week. Public safety, police and fire capital needs are addressed through this budget, and employee morale funding available for employee pay increases primarily through dedicated sales tax funds, because as we talked about, our general fund revenues are not, are very close to flat, less than 1%. We did have to deal with inflation and higher utility costs. We're able to keep the high priority items funded through the budget. Again, our major budget, the general fund, is at $44,625,900 for fiscal year 25 slight increase. We go through our budget book, we want to just highlight again those changes that you all have recommended and made since the last meeting. Last meeting, we wanted to repurpose a special project fund, housing incentive money for a capital account for industrial development, that is reflected on page 98. Hotel motel tax, on page 110, we removed the funding that was in a previous budget book for small animal pens. And we raised the transfer of the estimated carryover, about $100,000 that I talked about earlier. We do project that carryover will be higher if the council transfers carryover, and we raise that number to 555, so that's reflected on page... We'll tend to the budget that you'll see later, the Muskogee Municipal Authority, which handles a lot of our water and sewer revenue and infrastructure projects. Those are highlights that we've discussed previously. Muskogee redevelopment authority has a different license for Civic Center, so those are where our revenues come from that. Then Muskogee Parking Authority, on page 287, owns and maintains parking lots, barely in downtown Muskogee. So we know it's been a tough year for the general fund, but we have funded those strategic initiatives primarily through dedicated funds. It is a tough year, and we have had to make some cuts to general fund operations. There are all the decisions were made by strategic initiatives in conservative expense management, and funds were prioritized based off of the strategic initiatives of the city council. And again, the highlights, more than $10 million for street projects, increased funding for water quality, water line improvements, and a new sewer plant. Facilities maintenance and capital budgets increased, because we know we've got the deferred wages that we've spent a lot of time talking about this evening. Kept a high level of funding for economic development, housing incentives available, tourism funding increased, and public safety priorities addressed. Again, there's the bottom line for our general fund. The budget for you does reflect the changes that you requested last week. I've answered all the questions that have been given to me thus far. And we have to answer any further questions before the council considers adoption of the budget.
You may mention a two positions that you can, or two positions without us.
So those were, one was a, it might look at Mike Stewart's face, he knows who there for public works. One was a plant operator position at the sewer plant. And the second one, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head.
Water sewer maintenance worker.
Thank you, thank you, water sewer maintenance worker. So these were positions that have been empty for well over a year. And so we figured that if we've been managed able to struggle along without them, it's not ideal. But if we can't fully manage to get the job done, we're going to be left empty. Not without losing any employees, but also trying to keep our budget balanced by removing those two positions.
Yes, ma'am.
So again, when we discussed the budget before at the retreat, and we discussed all of these different things, we talked a little bit about the Economic Development Director. And is there any, like, how's that going to play into this budget? Because you said you were going to be working on that, how's that going to play into this budget?
So how do you view somebody who's in the Economic Development budget and has funding for that position?
I do have, also, we talked a little bit about the, and I know this may not be a lot, mean a lot to other people, but if we're going to service our community, and we have the opioid settlement funds that you've had Hall mentioned and all of those things, is there any way we can get, like, an itemized list of how they're going to allocate those funds? And I want to know if there are any initiatives, like, when those initiatives come up, how that will be handled? Think that will help us a lot with our efforts to negate homelessness, as well as, I see, I just can't help, as an educator, see that the youth funds increase 25%. Like, how do we become more proactive instead of adding to this budget? And the only thing going out of that is expenditures for, I guess, the clerks to file the fines.
Yeah, probably.
As a community service, I guess, but proactively, what are we going to do? Because, I mean, that's a punishment, community service is a punishment for the fines. So proactively, what are we going to do with some of these funds to make sure that our community is being serviced and given these, I think. So I would just ask for that information from this, thank you.
Manager, thank you, and staff, you did answer everybody's questions, and you forwarded the information to everybody for their review, and I thank you much for that. I will now entertain a motion to approve the budget.
Make a motion that we approve 2024, 2025.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second, roll call.
Tom Martinville.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes. Item number, motion passes, item number 21, please.
Consider approval of Resolution 2981, authorizing the continuation of the account fund for the City of Muskogee entitled Solid Waste Improvements, and designating the manner in which said account shall be operated for the fiscal year 2024-2025, or take other necessary action.
Mr.?
So, Mayor, this, Mr. Mayor and Council, this resolution funds the 212 account, which is a solid waste fund, which is on page 15 of your budget book. Just so you know, it's budgeted for $372,000, this transfers money into that account. And what this money pays for is the purchase of our trash trucks, our poly carts, and our two-yard containers. And it also pays for the funding of the N-COR organization that mans our recycling center, and it pays the utilities and the bills at the recycling center. Recommend approval, answer any questions you might have, this is a thing that goes hand in hand with the budget.
Any questions? Do you have a motion?
I'm ready for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, roll call.
Tom Martinville.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes. Item number 22.
Consider approval to nominate and appoint Councilor Melody Cranford to serve on the Purchasing Committee or take other necessary action.
I guess this is me. I'm proud to nominate Melody Cranford to this position, I think she'll do a great job. She's indicated tonight that she'll do a great job. I also want to thank her, I think she's going to make an excellent counselor. I have attended some events after hours, some of them, a lot of them. And she's always there. It's obvious to me that this community means a lot to her, and it's obvious to me that she wants to support the community and support the various events and the things that we've got on. She shows her love and support for the community, and I'm real proud of that. So I want everybody to consider approval, and I want to nominate Counselor Cranford to serve on the Purchasing Committee. And if I have a motion, that was my motion.
Yeah, I second him.
Okay, I have a second, roll call, please.
Tom Martinville.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes. Now, this meeting is adjourned, we're going to go to some special call Parking Authority Municipal. Dan, you do not have to be at these meetings, you can be excused of absence. I know you have somewhere to go, this is just a little minor deal, I'll be right behind you when we get through. You sure? Okay.
I'll hold your hand on that.
Well, you're probably going to drop me there. Okay. Guess we're on our... Well, now I think we're here. Okay. Okay, this is our special call, Muskogee Parking Authority, May 20th, 2024, roll call.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes, here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stow. Tracy Hoos. Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
C.B. Abel.
Here.
Melody Cranford.
Here.
Dan Hall.
Chris.
Tom Martinville.
Here.
Okay, item number one.
Consider approval of Resolution Number 2981, adopting the Muskogee Parking Authority budget for fiscal year 2024-2025, establishing budget amendment authority...
for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, establishing budget amendment authority, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, so I covered this, uh, last meeting. Everybody's having a question or a agenda, and happy to ask your questions.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martinville.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Plenary.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes. Okay. Return that meeting. Next is special call for the Muskogee Municipal Authority, May twentieth, twenty-twenty-four. Roll call, please.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stoudt. Tracy Hughes. Shirley Hilton Plenary.
Here.
C.B. Abel.
Here.
Melody Cranford.
Here.
Dan Hall.
Present.
Tom Martinville.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Uh, likewise, uh, we covered this previously. Uh, this is the budget for the Muskogee Municipal Authority. Do you have to answer any questions?
I'm ready for approval.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martinville.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Plenary.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Items approved. We'll return that meeting and move on to, now we're gonna have a special call. Muskogee Redevelopment Authority, May twentieth, twenty-twenty-four. Roll call, please.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stoudt. Tracy Hughes. Shirley Hilton Plenary.
Here.
C.B. Abel.
Here.
Melody Cranford.
Here.
Dan Hall.
Here.
Tom Martinville.
Item number one.
Consider approval of resolution number twenty-nine ninety-two adopting the Muskogee Development Authority budget for year twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, establishing budget amendment authority or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, uh, once again, we've covered this, uh, in the earlier meeting. Uh, we're happy to answer any questions. We'll do that.
I'm ready for approval.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martinville.
Yes.
Dan Hall. Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Plenary.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes. Okay, item passes, and we'll return that meeting. That'll be all for tonight. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate your hard work.